There we go, we're recording now. Awesome. Okay, so for those that weren't here at the start, if you want to grab your Hebron notes or your workbook, if you don't have those yet, then run and grab them. Tonight, we've got Josh Dangerfield leading us on our first section, which is verse 1 to 29 of Matthew 24, which you're probably already aware of. But as a bit of an intro for that, I'll read that for you in a moment. But if you want to bow your heads now, we'll just open in prayer. Oh Yahweh, the mighty Hail! We come into thy wonderful presence at this time. Thanks for thy guiding care. We thank thee that although we are all isolated physically from one another tonight, that we still have the opportunity to delve into thy word together. And we pray that thou would watch over us both tonight and in the weeks ahead as we continue preparing ourselves for Hebron by studying the Olivet prophecy and the exciting implication that holds. And so be with us now, and we long for that day when thy Son shall return again. And we leave our lives in our care praying through Christ's exalted name, even the Lord Jesus Christ. Alrighty, so if you have your Bibles there, just turn to Matthew 24. And I'll read you verse 1 to 29 as an introduction for tonight. So Matthew 24, verse 1. "And Jesus went out and departed from the temple; and his disciples came to him for to show him the buildings of the temple. And Jesus said unto them, 'See ye not all these things? Verily, I say unto you, there shall not be left one here stone upon another that shall not be thrown down.' And as he sat upon the mountain of olives, the disciples came unto him privately, saying, 'Tell us, when shall these things be? And what shall be the sign of thy coming and the end of the world?'" And Jesus answered and said unto them, "Take heed that no man deceive you. The many shall come in my name, saying, 'I am Christ,' thou deceive many; and ye shall hear of wars and rumors of wars; see that ye be not troubled; for all these things must come to pass, but the end is not yet. For nation shall arise against nation, and kingdom against kingdom; and there shall be famines and pestilences and earthquakes in diverse places; and these are the beginning of sorrows. Then shall they deliver you up to be afflicted, and shall kill you; and ye shall be hated of all nations for my name's sake; and then shall many be offended, and shall betray one another, and shall hate one another; and many false prophets shall arise, and shall deceive many; and because iniquity shall abound, the love of many shall wax cold; that he that shall endure unto the end, the same shall be saved; and this gospel of the kingdom shall be preached in all the world, for a witness unto all nations; and then shall the end come. When ye therefore shall see the abomination of desolation spoken of by Daniel the prophet, stand in the holy place. Who so read it, let him understand. Then let them which be in Judea flee into the mountains; let him which is on the housetop not come down to take anything out of his house; neither let him which is in the field return back to take his clothes; and woe unto them that are with child, and to them that give suck in those days. But pray ye that your fight be not in the winter, neither on the Sabbath day; but then shall be great tribulation, such as what was not since the beginning of the world of this time; no, nor ever shall be. And except those days shall be shortened; there should no flesh be saved; but for the elect's sake those days shall be shortened. Then, if any man shall say unto you, 'Lo, here is Christ!' Or, 'Believe it not, there shall arise false Christ and false prophets, and shall show great signs and wonders, so much that, if it were possible, they shall deceive the very elect. Behold, I have told you before; wherefore, if they shall say unto you, 'Behold, he is in the desert,' go not forth; 'Behold, he is in the secret chamber,' believe it not; for is the lightning cometh out of the east, and shone even unto the west; so shall also the coming of the Son of Man be; for wheresoever the carcass is, there will the eagles be gathered together. Immediately after the tribulation of those days shall the sun be darkened, and the moon shall not give her light; and the stars shall fall from heaven, and the powers of the heavens shall be shaken.'" Alrighty, well, for that as an introduction to our Hebron study, we'll hand it over now to Josh to lead us on this first section. Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, each, Jaden. Can you all hear me okay? Sweet. Just let us know if I got a message before, Sam, the audio is struggling. So if it is, let me know, and I can try to switch to a headset or something. So, alright, well, welcome to the first Hebron workshop. It's good to be able to go through and be able to get into a bit of study. And I mean, even though we can't get together physically together, it's still good that we can do it over Zoom. And I think we've even got some people from further afield, which is good. And I'm glad to see we even got Stephen Marshall has joined our class tonight. So we've got all sorts of people. So we're going to have a look at Matthew 24, and particularly the section from verse 15 through to 29. And what we're going to do is we're sort of going to split up this evening into, there's like four activities, if you like, or four sections where you guys, we're going to sort of set you up with a few quotes, a few questions. We're going to sort of work through some parts of the workbook. We don't have time, unfortunately, to go through the whole section in the workbook. We're going to pick out some of the key ideas and sections, and hopefully at least get you started so that you can start having a look at this a bit more in your own time. Hopefully, a lot of you have the workbook. I think, so I dropped it in the chat there. Let me just try one more time. I think for those who may have joined recently, it might not appear up. Appear, just give me a moment, and I'll just drop it in a second time. Someone say it's... It's not really sending a second time. If you, I'll share, I'll share the screen with some of the questions later on, so we'll get into it then. So I'll just bring up the slides. We wanted to sort of do a bit of an introduction to start with, to have a look at Bible prophecy in general, and why does God... What is the purpose of Bible prophecy? Because I guess this is, we're quite familiar with all the different Bible prophecies, especially in Daniel, you know, the different ones in Ezekiel that we talked about, and throughout a lot of the Old Testament with the prophets. And this is quite unique because it's part of Bible prophecy that's given to us directly by Jesus during his ministry. And it was going to be about AD 70. I suppose you do also have prophecy in Revelation, which was given directly by Jesus. But this was given, I guess, at the time to his disciples to tell them what was going to happen. And they ask him the question as to what is going to be the sign of your coming, end of the end of the world? And you can see that there in verse 3. And so these are the two questions that are asked, and this is what Jesus answers as he goes through Matthew 24. And there's different signs that he gives for his, when he's going to return. And particularly in this, in this first section, he talks about the last days and things for them to be watching out for. So having a look at this idea of, well, what's, what is the purpose of prophecy? Just taking a step back, not even looking at Matthew 24, what's the purpose of it? And the purpose of it is so that we can understand and we can know and have confidence that there is a God, and that he's in control. And it gives us great, great comfort to be able to actually see that. Here's a quote from Isaiah 45, verse 21, which says, "Declare and present your case; let them take counsel together. Who told this long ago? Who declared it of gold, of old? Was it not I, Yahweh? And there is no other God besides me, a righteous God and a Savior; there is none besides me." And also in Isaiah 46, he talks about, "There's none like me declaring the end from the beginning, and from ancient times, things not yet done, saying, 'My counsel shall stand, and I'll accomplish all my purpose.'" And I think sometimes we, we forget how amazing it is that we have these words that are able to give us warning, that are able to tell us the things that are going to happen in the future. And part of our first activity, we're going to have a look at particularly, who does God reveal the events, or the upcoming events in the world to? And why does he do it? And we're going to have a little bit of a look at that. And it's, it's quite incredible because especially like at the moment, when you have a look at world events and you see a world of turmoil and uncertainty, the amazing thing is that Bible prophecy helps us to look through, I guess, the lens of God's word and to look from God's perspective of the things in the world. And actually amidst all that uncertainty, that we have certainty. We can see that God is in control, even, even in events in the world where things seem to be chaotic. And this is, there's another quote from Isaiah chapter 41, which says, "Tell us about the future so we'll know what's going to happen. Prove that you're God by making your predictions come true." And God uses this as, I guess, as a case that he is the true God. But why does he give Bible prophecy to us? Okay, we can see that there is a God. But it's also so that he can provide encouragement to believers. And this is the first thing we're sort of going to jump in and have a look at. If you've got the workbook in front of you on page five of the workbook, which is the side of the section here, we're going to have, take, we're going to take five minutes now and just have a look at this section here. And the question is, why does God provide us with signs of what he intends to do? And why are they important for our discipleship? And so we've got a few things just on the screen here, just to kick you off. And have a look at this question of, why does God provide us with signs of what he intends to do? Take a look at Genesis 18, verse 17 to 19. There's also Amos 3, verse 7. John 15, verse 15, Revelation 1, verse 1 to 3. Have a look at those quotes and see if you can work out what are some of the key themes between them? And what do they tell us about how God works? And that'll sort of lead us into, I guess, the theme of what we're going to be having a look at tonight. So we'll take, we'll take five minutes just to have a look at those quotes. And then we'll sort of get together afterwards and sort of share with each other what we've got.
Yeah, Amos 3 verse 7 talks about the Lord does nothing without revealing it first to his servants, the prophets. Alright, so jumping into the next part, which is in Matthew 24. We've got in verse 12 where it talks about because iniquity shall abound, the love of many shall wax cold. But he that shall endure unto the end, the same shall be saved. And this gospel of the kingdom shall we preach to all the world for witness unto all the nations, and then the end shall come. And so I just want to have a look at this idea just before we get into, you know, the idea of fleeing Jerusalem. And some more of the details, this idea of love growing cold. And this is something that's spoken about that is going to happen. And it's because iniquity abound. So when, if you have a look at your workbook on page seven. I think it might be slightly different on the word document version. But there's a section there which talks about the Jewish leaders in Christ time being so focused. On I guess, all the small details of the law that then they neglected. Matthew 23 says, the weight here matters. So see if you find that section is page seven of the workbook. And what we're going to have a look at is this idea of, I guess. Religion to us, is it something that's ritualistic? Or is it something that's from the heart that we love to do, we love to serve God? Because I think Jesus talks about this at the start. Because it's the attitude that the believers need to have. If, as they sort of approach this, this section of prophecy. So those that actually have a love for God and for his word would be the ones that would take heed. Where it says, the love of many shall wax cold, if you're taking notes, that Greek word is psycho. It's to, to be without affection. And it's as though all the, as if you've got something that's really warm. That's just been, the idea of the Greek is to blow upon, is to cool it down. And until the, until it's really cold. So we've got a few quotes here which we're going to turn up. So have a look at that section of the notes. The question is, how can we avoid falling into the same trap of being ritualistic? With our worship and missing the point of what God is trying to tell us in his word? Because we know from, I guess hindsight, looking at the situation. That those in Jerusalem, and particularly the Jewish world, a lot of them didn't take heed. And that stuck to the law even after Jesus had come and had been preached by all the apostles. And as a result of not turning to God, they, Jerusalem was destroyed. So let's have a look at this idea of how can we fall into the same trap of being ritualistic with our worship and missing the point? Of what God is trying to tell us in his word? So we've got a few quotes here to have a look at. And then we'll sort of re-gather and get some thoughts afterwards. Also, just thinking that if anyone's got any other quotes that they think of as you're, as you're going along. Feel free to jot them down as well. And we can, we can sort of bring them up afterwards. It doesn't have to just be these quotes when looking at the particular questions. What are some of the things that people found?
A few of them were talking about how ritualistic religion is false worship. And it leads to, they will talk about how it leads to like thinking you don't need God or relying in flesh rather than God.
Yeah, definitely. And I guess you can sort of get into a bit of a routine and a, and a pattern, which is good. It's good to, good forming habits. But if that ends up sort of being what you focus on, just doing that, then, then that's not good. What else did people find? What were some of the things that helps?
Well, one penny thing offer of Jody's. We should also be worshiping him in spirit and truth. And doing with all our heart, soul, strength and mind. But also we need to be like humble in character. And as Jody said, reject worldly slash simple thinking. And before he's asked us, I got about this. James 1 verse 27, where it pretty much says, put the fathers and the words before us. So just put the needy people for us, be self-serving.
Absolutely. And yeah, thanks for that quote from James. I think that was Josh Hummer, was it? Thanks, Josh. Yeah, and that, the other quote in John talks about serving the father in spirit and in truth. It's great to have the truth, but also the spirit of it needs to come out as well. And, and that's what some of these quotes talking about. When you get to, you know, Revelation, chapter two, you read of Ephesus. Which is an ecclesia that was commended, yet they were told that they'd lost their first love. And that, that was part of it that they'd missed. Anything else that people found or that jumped out to them?
I found it interesting what you were saying like about the laitercy in Ecclesia who had lost their first love. It was interesting that it said, what the things that they were commended for before it says that is, you know, hating evil and really testing and proving things. So they were really vigilant to make sure that they had right doctrine and that people were doing the right thing. But I guess in their hearts, yeah, it was that, it didn't really match. And so it just had, yeah, reinforced for me, it's really important to make sure your, your heart is right. Not just that you're doing the right thing. That's cool.
Absolutely. Thanks, Liv. And that's the thing that I think that God really wants. He talks about obedience being better than sacrifice. Anyone else have any other quotes they wanted to share or something that jumped out to them?
Yeah, so the quote in Colossians is pretty cool. Especially some of the earlier verses. So Colossians 21, which is specific on the screen, says touch not, taste not, handle not. But when you look at the context, it talks earlier on that the people that were doing that were not holding the head. In high regard. And it talks in verse 17 about the law being a shadow of things to come. But the body is of Christ, i.e. the law and doing works effectively is a shadow of Christ. So I guess the point from that is to focus on Christ. And another quote to go with that was Galatians 3 and verse 24, which is kind of the classic quote to go with the law being a shadow. And that is says, wherefore the law was our schoolmaster to bring us unto Christ, that we might be justified by faith. So the same thing, I guess, the law and doing works and ritualistic views is a schoolmaster. But now that Christ is here, we need to focus on him more than just doing things.
Yeah, that's brilliant. I was actually, I'd looked at sort of some of the, and some of the words after, but not actually particularly before. That's actually really cool. Because that's, I mean, once we jump back to Matthew 24, that's the thing that they were focusing on. He talks, because the very context of Matthew 24 is Jesus says to, oh, sorry, the disciples say to Jesus. How amazing is this temple? And Jesus says, there's not one stone going to be left upon another of this temple. And they're going like, what, what, what's going on? Like, I sort of can't fathom that. But it's because the Jews, they, they kept holding on to the law. And you'll see this, I guess, in Hebrews as well. And once we get to the end section, if we've got a little bit of time. In Hebrews 11 particularly, there's a theme that goes through. Of not holding on to the things which seem permanent, which in this situation was, I guess, is Jerusalem. And the city and the law and everything that sort of came along with it. And that's a really good point. The law was just a shadow. The reality has come, the reality that casts that shadow is now here and we've seen him. You know, John talks about the fact that we've seen him and we've beheld him. And just afterwards in Colossians 3 verse 1, it says, if you are risen with Christ, seek those things which are above. Where Christ sits on the hand, on the right hand of God, set your affection on things above, not on things of the earth. And I think that's probably a great verse to sort of summarize or encapsulate this section. Jesus is talking about the fact that the love of many people is going to wax cold. And their desire, I guess, for, or their love of the word of God and of Jesus. Is going to slowly fade away. It's not something like you wake up tomorrow and suddenly you're, you're not interested anymore. It's a gradual over a period of time that that would, that that would happen. And so, yeah, that's, there are a few quotes which sort of talk about that similar theme. Alright. So let's jump into, let's keep going through Matthew 24. Which talks about, let's have a look in verse 15. This is talking about the destruction of Jerusalem. It says, when you therefore shall see the abomination of desolation spoken by Daniel the prophet, stand in the holy place. Whoso reads, let him understand. Then let them which be in Judea flee into the mountains. Let him which is on the house top not come down to take anything out of his house. Neither let him which is in the field return back to take his clothes. And this, I guess, is the, some of the famous warnings of Jesus to the believers to get out of there. As soon as you see the abomination of desolation spoken of by Daniel the prophet. Then flee to the mountains. And when you have a look at Luke 21, it talks a lot about when you see Jerusalem encompassed about by armies. Flee to the mountains, which you may think could be, it doesn't make sense. As soon as there's armies around the city, well, how on earth do you flee? And there's a really good section in the notes, which I guess goes into a lot more detail. And that actually sort of paints the picture. So if you have a bit of time, we won't jump into it now. But you can even have a look at it in our next activity here. But it talks about what actually happened in history in Jerusalem. And there was an opportunity that was given to believers for them to get out of the city. While they had time, because the troops after encompassing Jerusalem withdrew and gave them a period of time. Where they could get out of the city. Now, I think just the key thing to take away here is that this, this is something that's not easy. And something that would have taken great faith. So, and something just to remember when having a look at this. To suddenly flee the city, somewhere, a place where you've lived maybe your whole life with everything there. He's saying, don't even, you know, take anything from your house. Because you might want to say, well, he didn't say that, but that's the reason why. And when we have a look at Luke 18, verse 31 to 32. Actually, can someone read that one for us? Luke 18, verse 31 to 32?
I'm happy to read it, Josh.
Yeah, go for it.
Alright, Luke chapter 31 to 32. Then he took something in the twelfth and said unto them. Behold, we go up to Jerusalem, and all things that are written by the prophets concerning the son of man shall be accomplished. For he shall be delivered unto the Gentiles, and shall be mocked, and spitefully entreated, and spitted on.
Sorry Mitch, I think it's Luke 17. I've put the wrong one up on the screen. Luke 17, verse 31 to 32, well read.
In that day, he which shall be upon the house top and his stuff in the house, let him not come down to take it away. And he that is in the field, let him likewise not return back. Remember Lot's wife.
Alright, that sounded like it made a lot more sense. Thanks. Yeah, so this is, this is the section which refers to him that is on the house top and left his things in the house. Don't come and grab it. And one of the things that's mentioned is to remember Lot's wife. And if you remember Lot's wife, she, she didn't want to leave all of that behind. I guess that's one of the, the big lessons to us is, you know, how attached are we to the things of this life? And there's a really good section on page nine of the notes, if you turn there, which we'll go through and have a look, have a look at. And there's a table there, so there's three sections to this. So there's a table there which compares some quotes of Sodom versus Jerusalem. So at the top, you've got Isaiah chapter 1, Matthew 11, Mark 6, Luke 17. Romans 9 and Revelation 11. Have a look and see if you can compare some of them which reference Sodom. And, and they compare it to Jerusalem and the people of Jerusalem. See if you can find some of the key themes. Or what is it that links them together? And then have a look at the next question underneath it, which says, what are some of the ways? In which the believers at the age, time of AD 70 had to trust in God? Particularly in terms of the commands in verse 16 through to 20. Particularly in terms of the commands in verse 16 through to 20. So we'll just take maybe five, 10 minutes just to have a look at that section. All right, how'd, how'd we all go with that section? Just for the sake of time, we want some, just feel free to afterwards keep going and writing down a few points. Again, say to those quotes, if you didn't get, if you didn't get through them all. What were some of the, what were some of the key themes that you found between those quotes?
Sodom and Jerusalem were both besieged cities. Sodom and Gomorrah were brought down. And that there were dead bodies in Sodom according to Revelation 11 verse eight. And Jerusalem stand and killed the prop, killed God's messengers according to Matthew 23 verse 37.
Yeah, so you've got sort of, there's a few, I guess, parallels between Sodom and Jerusalem. Between, between a lot of these. And I guess we've got this comparison of remembering Lot's wife. And I guess the situation that Sodom was in when it was destroyed. And now we're having a look in, in Matthew 24, we've got similar warnings. And, but it's in relation to Jerusalem. What did some of the other quotes say about Jerusalem? About the people of Israel compared to Sodom?
Something I noticed in our two of the quotes will be more. Matthew 11 and the Mark quotes effectively was the people of Jerusalem were held more responsible. So the Sodomites didn't actually, they were never commanded to do things. God never gave them a law. They didn't know the truth. But Jerusalem and the Jews obviously did. And because of that, Jews in Jerusalem were held more responsible. And therefore they are judged, well, worse, I guess, in a way. God judged them more because they knew what they should have done, but they didn't do it.
Yeah, very good point. And you can see that particularly with those ones where it says like, what do you Bethsaida and Chorazin? You know, these are, these are things that you've had the Messiah come to you and, and speak, speak to you. And you've seen the signs and the wonders, and yet you still haven't repented. And that, that's what he's, that's what he's saying. That's a, yeah, good point.
I also think that was really interesting. Oh, sorry. I thought it was really interesting when I was looking at a Isaiah quote and the Romans nine quote. That although, like in the Matthew and Mark quote, it talks about how the fact that, you know, basically Jerusalem's more responsible. And they, in a way, will be judged harsher. But then the Isaiah and the Romans quote say that, well, actually God left us a remnant because if, and if God hadn't left us a remnant, then we would have been judged, like we would have been like Sodom and Gomorrah. So it's almost like in one sense that they should be judged worse. Because they had more knowledge and they're more responsible. But in the flip side, God's also left a remnant, which he kind of didn't do with Sodom and Gomorrah like. So it also like shows how merciful God is as well in keeping his promises. It's just kind of cool.
It's super cool. And that's, that's one thing I also found looking at these quotes is that it talks about a remnant that's left. And it's actually talks about that in, back in Matthew 24. Go there. Does anyone, can anyone find that in 24, the quote that sort of talks about that? About this remnant that is left? Or I guess it talks particularly about days being shortened. Verse, verse 22 of Matthew 24 talks about that, except those days should be shortened. There should no flesh be saved, but for the elect's sake, those days should be shortened. So that's that, that quote there. Yeah, great. All right. So what was, what were some of the ways in which the believers at the time of AD 70? What were some of the ways in which they had to trust in God, particularly in terms of the commands in verse 16, in verse 16 and 20? And some people have down, I was gonna say, you probably also put it in the chat as well.
Hey, Josh, I am just looking at verse 16 and 17. Having a prophecy given to you to just get up and run away from your house. Leave everything behind. Because in the next couple of years, an army is coming to destroy everything. That's pretty, you've got to have a lot of faith to just leave everything behind. So those believers at that time would have had to have real faith and trust in God that this prophecy was going to come true and that they did need to run for their lives.
Absolutely. And I think it would have been actually quite a hard thing because at the time, especially if the armies have withdrawn, it wouldn't have been like, you know, the next day, the armies sort of came back and suddenly Jerusalem was destroyed. There was a long, there's a long period of time, I think. I mean, I have to read up again, but I think it was even one or two years until they actually came back. So you imagine being away from your house for like a year and a half and people having a great time back in Jerusalem. Thinking, we're all good. That's, that's pretty hard, not even just leaving your house. Especially if you've just left your house and not grabbed anything and just left it all. And suddenly you're like, whoa, is, did I, did I understand Jesus wrong? Or it's, it's, it takes a lot of faith to do that, to just take out everything and go. And I guess it's also asked the question is how much, I guess, faith do we have in what God says? Even when things around us look different to what's, to what we'd expect. And I think that's something that's very hard to do sometimes is to do the, do what God says, even when we don't understand why. Because we always want to sort of understand why does God say that? Why do we have to do that? And often you can, you can find that, but there's some situations where it is harder to see that. And that's something I think that's quite hard to do. I realize we're pretty much, we're pretty much out of time. Did anyone have any other things they had down for that section there? They wanted to share?
Just a way which believers, you know, had to trust in God was because the Romans came down the first time under Vespasian. And while they're there, the people would have had to believe that, you know, God is going to send them away. So that they have time to get out. And then obviously when the Romans are gone, they then have to trust that, you know, what God has said, that these Romans are going to come back. So they have to trust in God and just, you know, leave, trust God to leave in that time as well.
That's a very good point. So like even when you've got armies surrounding Jerusalem, you've got to trust that there's actually, that you're actually going to have that opportunity to get out. I mean, that would be pretty scary at the time. You think, oh man, if we missed the boat, what's going on? Yeah, so yeah, great point. Thanks, Ethan. Any other things people had?
Just that last section there, Josh, about trusting in God when you can't really see what he's doing. Similar to what Noah had to do all the way back in Genesis. God told him, build a boat because there's going to be a flood coming. So he started building a boat in the middle of nowhere with no water around, trusting that God was going to send that boat. And Noah was waiting for 120 years for what God said to come, to come true. So similar faith to what, to what Noah had.
Yeah, really good point. I guess that's actually another time where you've got like a faithful remnant. He's all the people on the earth and there's eight people God chooses to save. I mean, that seems pretty, a pretty crazy situation.
Also to go, yeah, go. Also to go off Mitch's point. So you have, you know, Noah who's given a chance to get out. And then you also have Lot who was given a chance to get out of Sodom. And we were just comparing Sodom and Israel before. And, you know, they're both given a chance, you know, for the faithful to come out. So the angel came and took Lot out and the Romans left to let the Jews out of Israel.
Yeah, it's quite an, it's quite an amazing thing. So I think, to think that God gives us those opportunities for times when we, he always provides a way of escape. I mean, even, yeah, for Lot. All right, if some, if some other comments, we might leave it there. I did, I did also have a last activity, which instead of going through it, because we're out of the time, I might just leave it up on the screen. And I don't know if you screenshot it or whatever. But it's having a look at, let me just see if I can get up on the screen first. There you go. It's having a look at this faithful remnant. So I guess have a look at Isaiah 65. Is an interesting similarities and the workbook goes through a few comparisons with Israel at the time, at Isaiah's time. And in Matthew 24. But also one that's particularly interesting to go through is have a look through Matthew 24. And I guess with that in your mind, go through Hebrews 11 and read through those examples that are given. Because this was actually given to the Hebrews to help them to get out of, and to give them encouragement to do that. And he gives this list of the faithful. It's not just, just some list of all the faithful people. And if you didn't make that list, you're bad luck. Now it's, this is especially chosen list and all the things that are mentioned are encouragement to get out of Jerusalem. I'll give you one example from them. So for example, with Abraham, he looked for a city which has foundations, whose builder and maker is God. That's the example that they were given of this man that looked for a different city that had foundations, not the physical city, not Jerusalem. But the city that God's building, that's the important things. They were to get out of Jerusalem and seek that city which God's building. This is one of the encouragements. Or Joseph, of all the things that, that said of Joseph, it said that they, he gave command concerning his bones to get out of Egypt. To get his bones out of there. And they needed to get their bones out of there. It's interesting, have a look through Hebrews 11 and does an activity maybe for afterwards. See if you can find some of those themes. It's very interesting to sort of see the encouragement, I guess, for the people at that time. So I'm seeing already we're out of time, so we might leave it there, but it would encourage you to, in your own time, have a look at that parallel with Hebrews 11, Isaiah 65. And the other one is, these are all in the notes, but Deuteronomy chapter 28. Which has, it, it talks about how they didn't serve God with all their heart. Which is a similar theme to what we were just looking at. And then it goes in specifically into some of the details as to what would happen in AD 70. It wasn't a unique prophecy. It wasn't a unique prophecy as such in Matthew 24, Deuteronomy 28, it already talked about events that were going to happen in the siege of Jerusalem in AD 70, all the way back in Deuteronomy. So if you get a chance, check that one out as well. We'll leave it there for tonight.
Thanks, Josh. Hopefully that's been a good start for particularly those who haven't started their study yet. So sort of get into the Hebron study of Matthew 24. Certainly helped me out with some pretty interesting and useful points that came out. And we're in a pretty awesome predicament at the moment that we're all isolated at home for seven days. So now that we've just finished our first workshop, we've got this perfect opportunity now to continue our study the next seven days now that we're stuck at home and continue that Hebron study through the week. But I encourage you to keep that up and do that. So thanks again, Josh, for tonight. And anyone, you're welcome to stay back afterwards and maybe even discuss some of these these themes that come out in Hebrews 11 and Isaiah 65, if you want. We'll just close now in prayer. Our loving and gracious heavenly Father, to thy throne of grace, we approach thee at this time, praising thee for thy marvelous works. When we consider the heavens, the work of thy fingers, we are in awe of thy power. And tonight, heavenly Father, we've been encouraged not to fall into the ritualistic thinking, but to turn away from serving the world we are in, a world likened to Sodom. Instead, focus on the principles of watching, waiting, that we may be ready for that ultimate return of thy Son. So we pray, heavenly Father, for thy encouragement and thy guiding hand to be upon us as we continue to study the Olivet prophecy. So we leave our lives in night care, praying for thy Son's soon return to Israel. And it's through his name now that we offer this prayer, the Lord Jesus the Christ.